Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May meeting here at the Westfield City Hall. We usually begin with a prayer. Is Tim Krupski in the house? He was, I think, was going to speak. If he is not, then I'll lead us in a prayer, if that's okay, President. Will you all rise? And then we'll do the... First, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have our Cub Scout Pack 207 here in the back, if you can see them. And, gentlemen, I'll ask you to start us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you join me, please? Dear Lord, we thank you for this time to gather to express our government in the way that our founders of our country intended it to be. We're very blessed to have our Cub Scouts here tonight to observe this process. I ask that you watch over this body, watch over our councilors and our leaders here in our city of Westfield. Amen? President Ake, at your meeting, sir.
Thank you. There are, to be noted, a change in the... There's two different versions of the agenda. The special presentation by citizens of Westfield will be postponed till June, most likely, the first meeting the City Council has in June. And then the other one, I think we have Resolution 17-116, but that should be most up on... That should be on your agendas. And then the approval of the minutes, the approval of the meeting minutes for April 10, 2017. So those are the changes to note as we move forward. Will the clerk please call the roll and note the presence of a quorum? Here.
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 Here. Thank you. We have the minutes before us. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes, to state it.
So moved.
I have a clarification on that.
Mr. Hoover has a clarification?
The minutes state that there were six members of the council here at our last meeting. Dr. Keen was omitted, and he was here. As all of our votes carry a seven number, and Dr. Keen actually made some motions. So that's the only thing I had. Just, we left out one name.
All right, thank you. Do you have any questions? With that in mind, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Joe Edwards made a motion. Did I get a second?
Second.
Cindy Spoljarek seconded. Any other additions or corrections? All right, well, those that wish to approve the minutes, as read with the exception, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the minutes are approved. And we'll move on to the claims. And talking to scouts about this earlier. You know what claims are now, right? And what are they? Okay, so we'll move on to approve the docket sheet for main claims for May 8.
Move for approval.
Dr. Keen made a motion.
For approval, do I have a second?
Oh, that helps. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Cindy Spoljarek seconds. All those in favor of approving claims, if stated, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the claims are approved. Seven oh. All right. We move on to old business, and the first item under old business is ordered... We don't...
The special presentation we're not having tonight.
None?
None.
Okay. Very good. Okay, so the first item under old business is ordered 1627, Woodwind Planned Unit Development, PUD.
Good evening, President, members of the council. For the record, Jesse Pullman with On Point Land Matters, presenting this evening on behalf of the Economic and Community Development Department. This ordinance is a proposed change of zoning for the Woodwind Plan Unit Development District. The proposed PUD district consists of 706 acres located between 146th Street, north to 166th Street, and from Shelbourne Road to east of Town Road. This ordinance was first introduced to you on August 8, and it was last on your agenda on February 27, and it was sent back to the Plan Commission at that time at the petitioner's request for the Plan Commission to further consider revisions to the ordinance. Since your meeting in February, the ordinance has been further revised. The revisions generally include, one, the removal of 23 acres from the development; two, a reduction in 81 lots from the overall development, which reduces the density from 1.38 units per acre to 1.21 units per acre; three, it increases minimum lot standards in several of the subareas; four, enhanced buffering, specific to various adjacent proprietors, was incorporated, as well as along Town Road; five, increased architectural requirements and additional restrictions and limitations requiring a specific series of homes by the petitioner; six, restrictions for the number of permits that may be issued in a given calendar year; and lastly, is the overall highlight, an increase in the overall open space, which now represents approximately 41% or 290 acres of the proposed development. And that's just a brief highlight of the revisions that were made. This ordinance comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission, so as such, it is eligible for your adoption consideration this evening. The petitioner and the representatives are present. If you have any questions of them, and otherwise, Matt and myself are also available if you have any questions from the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate it. At this time, I entertain a motion.
I had a question for the petitioner. Does that need to wait till after the motion?
You can... You can ask the question.
Okay, there were emails. I know that our township trustee had asked about a right of first refusal if the golf course were ever to be sold and not operational as a golf course. There were some emails going around on that today. I would just like some clarification as to where that's at, either from staff or from the petitioner.
For the record, David M. Compton, Vice President, Land Acquisition, Polty Homes of Indiana. Councilman Hoover, in response to your question, had communications with the Township Trustee, Daniel Tolan, today. Due to legal implications, we were not able to agree to a right of... Direct right of first refusal on purchase of the golf course, which was discussed with cities legal. However, we came up with a compromise that we felt that would work for everybody. And that was that Polty Homes, upon purchasing the course, would put a public record, the ability that any subsequent owner that put debt on the course shall provide public notice, along with a request from their lender to provide public notice, if at any time, I want to make sure I read this correct, that there is a notice of default or election to accelerate the indebtedness or commerce, commence foreclosure on the golf course. I guess, kind of an Englishman's term, that means if someone ever... Someone bought the course after we owned it, and they borrowed money to help purchase the course, and subsequently defaulted on their note, they would be required to provide notice to the city of Westfield, as well as the Township Trustee, that they were in default and that there might be a foreclosure on the golf course. The important aspect of this is this allows the city of Westfield, as well as the Township Trustee, the ability to... The opportunity to step into the discussion during this process and save the Woodwind Golf Course. Of course, you know that this is in addition to the 50-year deed restriction that's part of the existing PUD. Does that address your questions, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 16-27, Woodwind Plan Unit Development.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, and there is a section... A second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have... I spent a lot of time reading emails today. And there were, I think, some common themes in those emails that I would like to address. There has been a lot of talk about needing more industry and business in Westfield. And if it were as easy as just asking for that, I think we would have been doing that a long time ago. We are trying to create a climate that brings those businesses and industries to Westfield. It's also important to note that those businesses require customers, those businesses require a workforce, and those businesses require appropriate zoning. And what we've found in the past is that if this zoning is in my backyard, I don't want it. We've run into that many, many times, as we do with residential. There are very positive developments that occur. And if we always go with what neighbors desire, we would not approve much of anything on this council. There were a lot of them that said that this does not follow the comp plan. That is just not true, in my opinion. Everyone has their opinion at that, of course. But our staff, who is trained in these matters, has suggested that it does, for all practical purposes, meet the comp plan. And is probably as much or more than many zonings we have completed in this city. There are many accusations of a lack of green space. This development maintains larger green spaces than any other major Westfield development that I am aware of, including several other golf course developments. They say that there are no rural areas being maintained. The comp plan designates nearly 20 square miles of rural acres across our township. This PUD does not happen to lie in that 20 square miles, for the most part. There's a need for infrastructure improvements. This is always the cart before the horse. Sure, rarely comes without development. And that is because the developments contribute right away for those improvements. They also pay road impact fees, which then allows the city to make those improvements. Without development, those improvements will... And this is different than the way the city has progressed for the last 20 to 50 years. There are claims that this is irresponsible development. I would argue that this is a predictable development that will occur over eight to 10 years. We know what we're getting and when we're getting it, as opposed to smaller developments. There was also a detailed financial analysis completed for this PUD, which is normally not the case. And that indicates that this is beneficial to the city, the schools, and to our future utility rates. One of the things that, in the eight years I've been on the council, I don't take this responsibility lightly. And I know that everyone is not going to agree with decisions, particularly when it's in my backyard. Those... But I have to look at, as a councilman, as an APC member, what is best for the city overall. I listen to every proposal that's made by petitioners, and I also listen to and read every email that I receive. I welcome phone calls. I welcome meetings to talk about what the issues may be with the development. And then I work toward getting that development the best that I think it can be. From that point, I have to make a decision on what is best for the city. And I do that without regard for political implications. I don't care. What I'm trying to do is do what is best for the city in the long run. And that is the only thing that I care about. If I didn't, I wouldn't have been doing this for eight years. It is a very thankless job, but I have loved doing it. And I'm going to continue to do what I believe is right for the best interest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Any other comments?
I have comments, but I'll reserve them prior to my vote. I don't know if other people will do the same thing, but I don't know.
Anybody else?
Hi, Councilor Hoover's comments totally. He and I have both been through this on APC. He has been able to put a tremendous number of hours into the betterment of all of this. And I think we share a similar approach, that this is something that is popular with everybody, but we view it in the context of the community as an entity of its entirety. It's not easy to be in a position like this, but it is something that I would feel similarly, that it warrants the consideration that it's here for. It's something that the city needs for the previously stated reasons. Totally agree that it's largely compliant with the comprehensive plan. It is not the reason that the citizens were asked to vote to improve the school buildings. The demographer for the schools was pretty clear when we had our meeting with them, that those students are already in the school system. We don't have to build a single additional residential unit. And all of those improvements are still desperately needed. And I'm pleased that we're going to get them for the better of one of the students. This is not the kind of thing that has caused it, nor will cause it to be replicated in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Any comments? We're ready for a vote? All right. We have a motion before us. Will the clerk call a roll, please?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Okay, I have to make a few comments first. Because I think it's important, in the context of this project, that we look at the past, as well as where we're going. Just because sometimes we forget our past, let's talk about what kind of construction we've had in the past. Because I read today's emails and yesterday's emails and Saturday's emails, like everybody else, plus all the previous emails. And there's a lot of misinformation out there. Construction history of the schools. Schools built buildings or approved buildings in 1995, 96, 98, 2000, 2001, 2003, 2004, 2006, 2017. Notice a major gap in between. We've had quite a bit of development in this community over the years. And the schools in the community have always been able to adjust, adapt, and provide outstanding education in spite of that. So having a lot of homes being built is nothing unique. What has changed is the demographic makeup of the homes. And in the past, a lot of those homes were starter homes. We had all kinds of SF4 and SF3, for those who remember those categories of housing, students coming in. Now, we're not getting that. We're getting students in in the middle school, intermediate school, middle school ages, and it's burgeoning the schools at the intermediate. In addition, you used to be able to build without approval of people. Now you have to go to the... Now, because of legislative changes, you have to go to a referendum process. The intent always was that when the debt rolled off, and we will start having debt roll off in this community at unbelievable rates in 2020, 21, 23, et cetera. About every time that I mention a building being built, the debt will roll off. So we're going to have a lot of debt roll off. But unfortunately, because of the rule changes in the legislature, the debt's rolling off under the cap, which means it will affect our businesses dramatically, but will not affect residential residents. But a referendum, which is intended to override TIFs, and it does, because anybody that TIF also pays a referendum rate, is imposed upon all taxpayers. So residential owners are going to not see the benefits of the debt rolling off, but have to bear the burden of the referendum that came on. And I think that's clouding a lot of the decisions that's going on in the community at this point in time. And unfortunately, it's gotten all mixed up. But the schools, and I've said this at past meetings, the schools needed the referendum regardless of Woodwind. Woodwind's, the demographic study that everybody has seen, took into account Woodwind at its maximum offering, not where it's at right now. And elementary enrollment will start dropping in four years. That's a demographic projection. We have no starter homes left in this community. We only have homes for people who will come in with students middle school age and up, be in the schools for five or six years. And those will be empty nester homes for a long time, still paying taxes. So the referendum had to be held. It had to be advertised for worst-case scenario. State legislature said, "You present a referendum for however long it needs to be, at a tax rate, worst-case scenario, tax rate, and you cannot take assessed value growth into account." And the schools had to do that, and they couldn't complain about it. But the school referendum that was just passed will not even hit the tax rolls for two years. In two years, we will probably have 20% AV growth in this community. And just like when you buy a house, you have a principal payment and an interest payment that is fixed. Schools will have that, too. So as AV goes up, the tax rate will go down. Has to happen. Law doesn't permit them to issue more bonds for projects that were not approved in the referendum. So before the tax rolls even start, the tax... Maximum tax rate will probably be 25 cents, 24 cents, maximum. And they'll probably phase it in. But they can't talk about that either, because that's not presenting worst-case scenario. So there's a lot of factors with the referendum. It's clouded people's judgment that was unable to be presented because of legislative dictates or changes in the law. The intermediate school, middle school could have been put in under the cap. Had it been put under the cap because of legislative changes, school would have lost its protected tax living, wouldn't have been able to offer transportation. These are facts that can't come out. But we can say them now after the referendum. So the referendum still needs a lot of clarification, a lot of understanding from the general population, because it's been 11 years since the last building was done. Also in email traffic, there was, "We need more commercial, less residential." Councilor Hoover talked about this. "I've found out over the years, commercial follows residential. It doesn't lead residential. You need rooftops to drive businesses' development." And so we can't just say, "No more residential. Let's go out and get commercial," because it's not going to happen. Have to have both. Have to have that residential to drive that. That doesn't mean we have to approve multiple residential developments and different types of housing, but we have to have residential development. I've watched this carefully. I've attended some meetings, and I haven't attended others. But I have listened to my colleagues. But I also listen to members in the community. I... Oh, I forgot to start off by thanking people. It's very important to me that people maintain civility and respect for each other. And I said this before, and I'll say it again. Both groups, those supporting and those opposing, who were directly involved in this process, have been very respectful, very informative, and I thank you for that. Because, to me, that's the Westfield way. Yes, there were a few people who got a little bit carried away online with some name-calling and some different things. And quite honestly, when you threaten me with not voting for me, I would hope that the general population would not want a counselor who voted on something to prevent somebody not voting for them. I hope they would say and respect somebody for voting for what they think is in the best interest of the community. I have said, it's important that we have... I represent my district, and I also represent my community. If I were going to vote on this only by representing my district, it's a simple vote, because this development will help drive down referendum rates and drive down tax rates. The space has already been provided. But that's not the only thing in here. A cohesive, working-together community that looks forward together is very, very important to me. And I think there are two things about this project that have bothered me in the past month or so. One, it's taken so long. I feel like we're pulling teeth and dragging people to the best possible conclusion. And it should be a win-win for the community and for the developer. And I'm still not sure we're there. And secondly, I do not like situations where APC members or counselors are disrespected. And in a recent APC meeting, I feel like APC members were disrespected. And that bothers the heck out of me. So there's a lot of reasons why I should vote for this. There's a lot of reasons why I should vote against this. But I came to the conclusion that I think, in the best interest of the community as a whole, that I have to cast a no vote.
Thank you, Mark.
So Mark Keen was a no.
Yes. Yes, I'm a no.
Before I cast my vote, I'd also like to take a couple of minutes and... If you'd just give me that opportunity. I've been fairly silent over the months. I... It's kind of interesting. I think I was in Texas on a bit of a family holiday. I think it was maybe June. And it wasn't last June, I don't think. I think it was June of 2015, actually. And I received a phone call from a constituent, from an individual in my district, asked if I had a few minutes, and I said, "Absolutely." So I excused myself from the family event and walked around in this pasture at a ranch and spent 56 minutes on the phone talking to this individual, who I really didn't know. I listened. It was... The... This individual asked, you know, what I knew about this potential development and so forth. And then what's interesting is, tonight at 5:19, I received another call from the exact same individual. And said, "Do you have a couple of minutes?" And I said, "Sure." And then 18 minutes later, our phone call was ended. I look back what's happened during that time and kind of analyze things. And generally, I look that reality is, very little has changed. I mean, it just... To me, it's pretty simple. It's still a large residential development in a rural area with a lot of really good points and some bad points. And if you fast-forward, you go through all these months, all the meetings, all the hours in agony. Reality is that it's still about community development. It's what's best for the community at large, not just the district. You can't listen to somebody that's just next door saying, "Not in my backyard." I get that. It's in my district, so I've been very attentive to attend all the meetings, to listen. I've tried not to offend anybody, but I've probably said some things that were offensive. And I'm not necessarily going to apologize to that, so don't feel singled out. It's just what happens during these processes. We ask questions. Sometimes their emotions are high, and you go on. But at the end of the day, reality is, things have changed. Over that time period, there have been a lot of changes. And there have been some phenomenal comments made here. And they all impact what's... Where we are, the point in time where we are right now. You know, I looked at the school situation. I've had a little bit different take on it. Quite frankly, I've looked at school systems that are ranked... I mean, we, I've read emails that said, you know, "You're going to totally ruin... This is a catastrophe here for our school system." I don't believe that. I don't believe that if our school system grows by 50% or 100%, that we're going to lose our ranking in any way, shape, or form. I just don't believe that. I think a commitment is based on how we grow and how we are challenged by that growth. I've looked at school districts that are ranked slightly above us. And we're like fifth or sixth in the state out of 421 schools. And we're 500 or something. I have the... And we're five hundred or something. I have the, I have the exact numbers here somewhere with me. We're five hundred and sixty-first in the nation. Give me a break. I mean, you know, we got a great school system. And by building a few more homes, I doubt if it's gonna collapse. That's just my opinion. I look at school systems around us that are both smaller and larger, and they're ranked right in there with us. We should just all be super thankful that you can turn to the right or left, and you can find a school system that's ranked in the top of the country. I mean, wow, you know, short of, you know, we don't see sun every day. I mean, we live in the middle of paradise. Tonight, we're here really to kind of address the, this moment in time. And I've looked at it and said, you know, how do we best do that? And you wake up tomorrow, five years from now, and obviously, I've talked too long. I could write a book. Most of you wouldn't read it, and the ones that did wouldn't believe it. So it doesn't make any difference. I mean, reality is reality and perception is perception. So at the end of the day, we have to figure this out. It is a burden. It's a real burden. And, you know, we're not gonna be influenced by, you know, I won't, you won't vort for me. I'm probably not gonna run again, so it doesn't make any difference. We're trying to do what's right for the community, and this is a big decision. I believe that no matter what the outcome is tonight, you know, we're all gonna get up tomorrow. We're all gonna be Westfield residents, and we're gonna be ready for the challenge. Our schools are gonna continue to be some of the best. We're gonna have great neighbors. If this is passed, those people that come live in our community are gonna be great residents. And if it fails, it's probably not over, because that land out there will still be developed. Just because this is voted down doesn't mean that there aren't gonna be homes out there at some point in time. May not look exactly like this. May look a little different, but there will be more residents coming to join our community. I think that's positive. So no matter what, we're all in this together, and a lot of people have put in a lot of effort, which they should be proud that they have participated. If nothing else, if nothing else happens, I personally watched and talked to a lot of people that have participated in this process that have never done that before. And I think for that, that's a positive. So at the end, I've gotta look at this as a snapshot in time. I'm gonna tell you that overall, from my business experience, from what I believe, I believe that this probably is a good thing for the long-term benefit of the community. That's just what I believe. Now, when I look at the residential, you know, not just the neighbors, but the overall residential residences here in our community and the challenges that we face, and there are many. And you go through referendums, again, there's reality and perception. We still have to be very considerate of what we do today, because there'll be a tomorrow, and we can regroup and go for it again. With that thought in mind, I'm gonna cast a no vote.
Thank you, Chuck. Appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, I know. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a statement too. Thank you. This has been a long, um, journey. It's brought some people together. It's separated people. It's, it's an issue that has taken its toll, um, and has raised a lot of eyebrows and concerns. Combined with some other needs of the community and the school referendum, and there are good people on both sides of the aisle. We've talked about the civility, which is very important to me. The fact that we are friends and neighbors, and after this, we'll be friends and neighbors. And I can't, um, tell you how much I respect Dr. Keen, Chuck Lehman, Steve Hoover, Cindy Spuljeric, Joe Edwards, Bob Horkey. We all serve together, and we all serve and have the best interests of this community at heart. It is in that spirit that we must move forward together. We must fill in the gap, and I'm going to vote no.
If the motion fails, five to two.
The motion fails, five to two. Can I have another motion?
We actually need a motion to deny? Oh, I thought it was just done. A motion to deny, ordinance sixteen twenty-seven.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Excuse me? Cindy, will you call the roll then, when you're ready? So?
Well, we already called the roll, and I've got the vote.
So?
No, this is, this is for deny.
So? Okay, so I vote yes.
Chuck Lehman?
Yes.
Bob Horkey?
No.
Steve Hoover?
No.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Mark Keen?
Yes.
Yes.
This is nine. Well, thank you, everybody. If you were here for this one item, we'll let you, before we continue on with the agenda, we'll give you time to adjourn. Just take a minute here.
This would have passed, I believe, I didn't happen four months ago. Three months ago, this may have passed. It dragged your heels so long, it got mixed up with everything else, and you can't have a divided community.
All right. We'll, we'll continue on down the agenda. If you could take your conversations, if you need to have them outside, that would be wonderful. The second item under Old Business is ordinance seventeen oh four, Field Brewing, Brew, Brewing in the Junction. It's a planned unit development district. Ms. Pam Howard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, before you this evening, for adoption consideration, have a change of zoning request for a planned unit development district to be known as Field Brewing in the Junction to accommodate a new restaurant and brewery. This site is located at the southeast corner of Main Street and Cherry Street, and is currently zoned a local business historical district. The standards in the proposed ordinance will allow for development of the restaurant brewery as depicted on the content plan and character exhibits. The use itself is permitted by the current zoning. This item was presented to the Grand Junction Task Group on January thirty-first, and a letter of support is included and linked to my staff report. Since the time this was introduced to you, the petitioner has added additional details to the character exhibit in response to department and plan commission comments. This item comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the May first Plan Commission meeting and is eligible for adoption this evening. The petitioners are here. They do not intend to make a presentation, but are available for questions, as am I, if you have any of staff. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Pam. Uh, this is up for council, uh, consideration tonight. You have any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Joe Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
Cindy Spuljeric came in under the line. Will the clerk call the roll?
I have a point of order. Is that a motion to approve or deny?
Joe, was that a motion to approve?
Approve.
Okay. Thank you for that. Is there any discussion, further discussion?
I, I have one question. I'm not a planning expert, that's for sure, but, uh, the place looks a little short of parking, and I, I know they wanna park along Main Street, but that's gonna be a really a crowded place there with the parking. I hope you can do something to alleviate that, because it's, it'll be an impediment to your business if you don't get it done, really.
Joe, this was, that issue was thoroughly vetted at the Technical Advisory Committee meeting and also at the Plan Commission. And the LBH district in downtown intentionally does not have a minimum onsite parking requirement, because it's supposed to occur within the city streets and throughout the downtown. That's, that's just the logic of it, so.
Okay. Well, they're gonna have to walk, walkaways to get to it. I mean, I, I hope they have a good deal, and I'm gonna vote for it, but that's gonna be a problem sometime.
Any other comments? Hearing no other discussion, would you call, call the roll, please?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm gonna call up Jesse. The next item of Old Business is the ordinance seventeen ten, the Unified Development Ordinance Amendment.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Jesse Pullman with On Point Land Matters, presenting on behalf of the Economic and Community Development Department. This ordinance in front of you is an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance that was introduced to you at your March twenty-seventh meeting. The ordinance comes to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission following a public hearing on April third. As a result of the Plan Commission's consideration, the ordinance includes three revisions since it was introduced to you back in March. The first two are minor and pertain to the tree preservation certificate. And then in the non-conforming section, language was added to further clarify that right-of-way takings also included trails and not just streets. The third change was a condition of the Plan Commission's motion to send the recommendation, and it included a provision regarding self-storage facilities. As originally introduced to you, no self-storage facility was permitted within the thirty-two overlay. The revision allows it within the overlay, as long as the storage facility is not located within three hundred feet of State Road thirty-two or between the required access road and State Road thirty-two, whichever is greater. And then it includes an exception that would allow the self-storage facility's office space, however, to be located within that area. So as a result, if you have any questions this evening, I'm trying to help answer those for you. Otherwise, I would like to thank you for your time, and this ordinance is eligible for your adoption consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Do we have any questions for Jesse? Hearing none, I entertain a motion. Move to approve ordinance seventeen ten. Mr. Horkey made a motion.
Second.
Mr. Hoover seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Will you call the roll, please, Cindy?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Uh, moving on, we have a couple, um, resolutions here. The first one we have to adopt first is the fiscal plan for annexation. Pam, you'll present both of these together.
Yes, correct.
All right. And these are up, both are up for adoption. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening again. Pam Howard with Economic and Community Development. Before you this evening, for your adoption consideration, have a one hundred percent voluntary annexation and associated fiscal plan for eight point two acres on the north side of one ninety-first street, west of Moon Town Road. The purpose of this proposal is to provide the required contiguity for a future annexation, which will actually appear later on your agenda for introduction, for the approved Schofield Farms Planned Unit Development District. This lot will not be part of that neighborhood. A public hearing was held for the annexation on April tenth and is eligible for adoption this evening. As the president said, the fiscal plan must be adopted prior to the annexation ordinance. I do have John Isaacs here with M.I. Holmes, who is representing the petitioner, who's not planning to make a presentation, but he's available for questions, as am I, if you have any of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Any questions for the petitioner or Ms. Howard? I entertain a motion. Let's take the Resolution seventeen one oh eight fiscal plan first.
Move to approve Resolution seventeen dash one oh eight.
Okay. Steve Hoover made a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
Mark Keen, second. Any discussion?
One thing I just wanna say, um, if you read through this fiscal plan, if you're not, not really aware of how tax money works and, and all those things that go along with government and your taxation of your property, this is a really good one to do that, because it's very simple. So if you haven't looked at anything like that before, I encourage people to take a look. I know it sounds boring, but when you look at the details, it's interesting. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment, Cindy. All right, we have a motion for resolution. I'd ask everybody to signify by saying aye to pass this resolution. Aye, aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And we have an ordinance seventeen eleven related to this. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance seventeen dash eleven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Horkey, seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you call the roll, please, on the ordinance?
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you, council. And we enter into the new business portion of our agenda. And we have ordinance seventeen dash fourteen, which will be a council introduction tonight. Dane, welcome.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. The item presented is an introduction of ordinance seventeen dash fourteen, which is a proposed amendment to the Oak Ridge Point Planned Unit Development, specific to the O R Commercial Three sub-district. The amendment would allow a commercial recreational facility, specifically a thirty-six-hole miniature golf course, to be built on the property. An associated restaurant is also part of the petitioner's proposed development, though the restaurant is currently allowed by right. The area listed under the proposal is approximately five point three acres, zoned as part of the Oak Ridge Point P U D, and is located just west of the Speedway gas station on the north side of State Road thirty-two, near the intersection of Oak Ridge Road. This ordinance was presented at the April eighteenth Technical Advisory Committee and is scheduled for a public hearing at the May fifteenth Advisory Plan Commission meeting. This ordinance will return to you in the future for adoption consideration. Terry Bernworth of Pyramid Architecture and Engineering is here to present on behalf of the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Dane.
Good evening. My name is Terry Bernworth with Pyramid Architecture and Engineering, and I have with me, uh, Mr. Ted Gelov, and he will explain what he is going to be putting in.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to, to present our, our development proposal.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Ted Gelov, twenty-two ninety West one hundred and thirty-sixth Street in Carmel, Indiana. I will state for the record as well that I do own a, um, a property in, um, South Park Business Park that I've had since two thousand and four. So I am a landowner and building owner in, in Westfield. So thank you. So our proposal is to add to our family dining, uh, concept, a miniature golf, uh, facility that will have thirty-six holes, so two eighteen-hole courses, occupying the, um, the west side of the, of the property. I have much, much further than that, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioners? I've walked the property. There's floodplain to the back. Um, I think that's an excellent use for that piece of property. It butts up against the Speedway, and, um, it's a smaller parcel. And, um, I think it adds to that. And I think it adds to that entertainment part of the corridor. Those are my only comments. What, what's this gonna look like? I mean, are you gonna have waving bears out there and, and?
No, the, the course design is intended to be a landscaped course. It'll have some water features, a lot of landscape, and a slight rolling topography to provide undulations for, for the variety of holes. You can see some of the concepts here with water landscape.
Any, any other questions?
That's, that's in the overlay district. I, I guess this is a permitted use, is it, Cindy?
The restaurant is.
Yeah. How about the golf course?
Miniature golf is, is not permitted. A, a regular golf, I think if I'm not mistaken, a regular golf course is, but miniature isn't for some reason.
You gotta have waving bears to, to pull them in.
Well, well, if that would please the council, we'll put waving bears, but that's not, that's not what's intended. But it, it's intended to be just water, water, natural landscape and, and really gonna be a, a beautiful course that will change naturally from year to year with, with the growth of, of shrubs and flowers.
We're not entertaining any questions. Thank you. This isn't a public hearing, I'm sorry.
Will the trees on site remain, any of those that are, that are in that floodplain area? Are, are you gonna move any of that?
I, I don't know what's intended with, with the existing trees, but it would beautify the course if we can leave every, every natural element as possible. So typically what we would do is work around the, the natural topography and the landscape that's already present.
Is the indoor part of this restaurant, the seven thousand square feet, you're not factoring in outdoor patio into that seven thousand square feet?
We're not factoring outdoor patio into seven thousand square feet. Is that correct? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is ordinance seventeen dash fifteen. Presented by Ms. Howard. Oh, sorry. Right here.
Thank you again. Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening for introduction, I have a one hundred percent voluntary annexation of one hundred and forty-three acres on the west side of Moon Town Road between one hundred and ninety-first and one hundred and ninety-sixth street. This area is zoned the Schofield Farms Planned Unit Development District, and this district was adopted back in January. This item is for public hearing tonight, and it would be eligible for adoption at your first meeting in June. I do have John Isaacs here again with M I Holmes, who is available for questions, if you have any of him. I'm also available if you have any of staff. Thank you.
Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions? Hearing none from council. I'll open the public hearing at five minutes to eight. Do we have any cards?
I do not, sir.
Anybody like this, would anybody like to speak to the voluntary annexation? Ordinance seventeen fifteen. You need to come up to the mic and state your name, please, and fill out a card.
But anyway, most of, most of these things that you are approving of are in the floodplain. I've lived in floodplain for fifty-
Ms., Ms. Williams, are you?
My name is Sharon J. Williams, yes.
Yes. Are you, are you addressing the ordinance seventeen dash fifteen, the voluntary annexation of Schofield Farms?
Anything in that area, yeah, anything in that area. That in particular, yeah.
Okay.
Most of these-
You have three, would you start the timer, please?
Most of these things that you have been listening to, in case you don't know, I've lived here fifty years. I'm seventy-seven years old. I was born in Washington Township. Most, I had to write because Hamilton County and the city of Westfield changed my address to approve of the filling station there, Speedway Filling Station. I had to write FEMA in the United States Department of Justice to get that changed back because I pay seven hundred dollars for that insurance. The only thing I'm concerned about is this. When you're approving all this, I want to make sure, because when my home was built, it was built in the floodplain too, okay? The idiots that approved that did not know what they were doing. I'm just trying to educate you. If you're not educated on that, I'm educating you. That's it.
Thank you. Would anybody else, before I close the public hearing, like to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at eight o'clock. Thank you. Any other comments? This will be up for adoption consideration at our June twelfth meeting. Thank you. Ordinance seventeen dash sixteen, Hall and House Planned Unit Development District Amendment. Matt Pleasant will be presenting. This is counsel introduction tonight.
Thank you, counsel. For the record, Matt Pleasant with the Economic Community Development Department. The item before you is a P U D amendment of the Hall and House P U D, which includes the Ricker's gas station and the Monon Marketplace. The proposal will provide new standards for monument signs for the location. This item is scheduled for a public hearing on June fifth and we'll, we'll return to you for future adoption. I would like to introduce Mr. Joseph Calderon of Barnes and Thornburg to further present this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, President AIC, members of the council. Joe Calderon, attorney with offices at eleven South Meridian, representing actually two landowners, one being an affiliate of Greenwald Development, the other being an affiliate of Ricker's. Greenwald is kind of driving this. The Hall and House original P U D was painted with a very broad brush and really didn't have sign standards per se, particularly with respect to freestanding signs. So what's happened is we are now drafting an amendment to that ordinance to provide standards for two signs, which are already in place, and a third sign, which was under construction. And on behalf of the developer, we apologize for that. They hired a sign contractor who didn't do all the things that we're supposed to do. For those of you who may be familiar with the signs, we hope you like them because we're writing to basically legally establish those signs. So we have an existing Ricker's fueling sign with the LED display for fueling prices at this corner near Wheeler Road and Thirty-two. There's a freestanding monument sign, a little less than fifteen feet in height here, that identifies tenants mostly in this building, as well as Ricker's having a panel. And then there's a third sign at the back entrance off Wheeler Road that we're posing a right to. And I think if we can advance to the-
Is there another? Okay.
So here are the two Monon Marketplace signs. This one's in place, it'll be very consistent, brick, stone. This is a little less than fifteen feet in total height from base to the top, less than a hundred and twenty-five square feet in total sign area, which is consistent with other sign standards that I've written into P U Ds. This is the one that is in existence that's on Thirty-two. This is the one where the base is erected and the sign has not been. And this has about thirty square feet and is a little less than ten feet in total height. So the signage is about thirty feet per face. And I think there's one other rendering of the Ricker's sign, which is in place, again with the LED pricing module. So this sign is a little less than seven feet in total height. And so we've written really the P U D amendment to bring these to the city in a legal fashion since the original amendment was devoid of standards. So we hope to take this to the Plan Commission and it's my understanding that our, the developers have met with staff prior to filing this amendment. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the petitioner? All right?
Okay.
Thank you. We'll move on to A P C. Ordinance seventeen seventeen, Village Park Plaza Planned Unit Development. Mr. Pleasant.
Thank you again, counsel. For the record, Matt Pleasant with the Economic Community Development Department. The item before you is a proposed P U D named Village Park Plaza One, which would include the redevelopment of a portion of the Regal Cinema, creating up to four new storefronts and two proposed outlots. This item is also scheduled for a public hearing on June fifth and will return to you in a future adoption. I would like to introduce Jesse Pullman for On Point Land Matters to further present this proposal.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, president, members of the council. For the record, my name is Jesse Pullman with On Point Land Matters, presenting on behalf of Washington Prime Group this evening. Here with me this evening are Steve Nichols and George Sladek with the Washington Prime Group and the project engineer, Michael Thompson with Hamilton Designs. What I'm introducing to you is a change of zoning for the twelve acres located at the northeast corner of one hundred and forty-sixth street and Greyhound Pass, which consists of the existing Regal Cinema, as noted by Matt. The property currently is zoned the Special Business Plan Development District, which is a district that predates the city's P U D districts. Washington Prime makes this request to accommodate a remodel of the interior of the theater and a renovation of approximately twelve thousand square feet at the south end of the existing building, which would result in the building being, having a second front facade oriented towards one hundred and forty-sixth street. The renovation would accommodate retail and restaurant space, as noted by Matt. In addition to the remodel and renovation, the proposed project also contemplates two potential outlots at the southeast corner of one hundred and forty-seventh street and Greyhound Pass. The project represents an estimated eight and a half to ten million dollar investment into the property. The P U D district is requested to create a structure that can better accommodate the existing improvements and facilitate the proposed improvements while at the same time modernizing the governing regulation. In addition to the ordinance being introduced to you, Platts and development plans were also filed last week that will also have a public hearing at the June fifth Plan Commission meeting. The property is located within the area designated by the Comprehensive Plan as regional commercial. So as proposed, the renovation and redevelopment will continue to meet the economic and design objectives and policies of the Comprehensive Plan. Prior to the scheduled public hearing at the June fifth Plan Commission meeting, we would like to invite you to an open house where we'll be hosting adjacent property owners on May twenty-fourth at six P M. at the library. So if you have any questions this evening that we can take with us as we move through the public process, I'd be happy to receive those. Otherwise, I'd like to thank you for your time and we look forward to being back in front of you. Thank you.
Jesse, with the, go back to the previous slide. With the addition of those outlots, are you, is there, are you familiar with the parking and is it adequate for the types of businesses they anticipate there?
Yes.
And what is that structure to the back of the?
This is the development, will house the enclosure and trash compactor for the cinema.
I had sent in a comment to staff and I hadn't heard back yet. Just wondering about, we're, we're trying to get rid of the, all the lights, hopefully, going down that structure, or at least what we can. And wondering if there is enough right-of-way in this, in this plan to accommodate if we needed for a roundabout or something similar? You don't have to answer that now. I mean, I'm just hoping-
And just for clarification, you're referencing the intersection of one hundred and forty-sixth and Greyhound Pass?
I think it's one hundred and forty-seventh.
Hundred and forty-seventh and Greyhound Pass?
Yeah, one hundred and forty-seventh.
Between Menards and the theater.
Thank you.
Didn't realize that was actually named one hundred and forty-seventh.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Then next item is ordinance seventeen eighteen, Spring Mill Station S E C Planned Unit. Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. Again, Pam Howard with Economic and Community Development. Before you this evening for introduction, I have an amendment to the Spring Mill Station southeast corner Planned Unit Development District. This six point three acre P U D district is located at the southeast corner of one hundred and sixty-first street and Spring Mill Road and was adopted in two thousand and fourteen. The purpose of the amendment is to allow for two monument signs in, in lieu of the existing sign that will be removed and to add, and also to permit a drive-through at the end of the proposed multi-tenant building. The developer has worked with the Spring Mill Space, Station Task Group prior to filing this petition and will continue to work with them to further refine the proposed standards. Again, this is eligible for introduction tonight and will receive a public hearing at the June third Plan Commission meeting. It could be back before you for adoption consideration as early as June twelfth. I do have Michael House here with Cooperstown Partners. He's not planning to make a presentation, but he is available for questions, as am I, if you have any of staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions before we move it to A P C? All right. Thanks. Resolution seventeen-one-fourteen, amended policies and procedures. Mr. Zager.
Yes, sir. What you have before you are three proposed policies and procedures that we are requesting be adopted by the council. These policies and procedures are the result of some research by John Rogers and it's geared towards bettering or maintaining our current credit rating. These are the kind of policies credit rating agencies like to see in place in cities such as ours. These policies don't alleviate any authority to incur debt. It doesn't give any authority to do anything that's not being done currently. It does, however, put it in a solid writing and, and allows us to advertise that to the credit rating agencies.
We had meetings on this with the different people involved.
We had a pretty long meeting. We changed some language. I think this is, we, we had a little machinery problems with clerk's office instead of a controller's office and whatnot. And the language is now acceptable to everybody involved.
I might say that one of my concerns was that the city and its agencies, which would be primarily the R D C, Redevelopment Commission, Redevelopment Authority, and their power to borrow money, but that all springs from the city council.
I wouldn't say springs. I would say you have the authority to stop it. These policies and procedures wouldn't automatically be administered by the R D C or the R D A since they're separate entities. They could adopt them. However, I believe your concern was whether or not these policies and procedures would give them the authority to incur debt without the council check.
That's correct.
And it, it does not. The processes in place that bring all those proposed indebtedness requirements come to you by statute.
All right, thank you. Any other conversation, discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion. This is up for adoption consideration.
So moved.
A motion by Joe Edwards. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, that's to approve.
To approve, yes.
All right. Mr. Horkey seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Resolution seventeen-one-fourteen passes. And Mr. Zager, resolution seventeen-one-sixteen, the reestablished Acume Cap Development Fund?
Yes, sir. As you know, this is an annual process to reestablish our Acume Cap Fund. It's currently set at five cents a hundred. If we do not do this, we're not able to capture that.
And this is something we do every year.
Every year.
I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Excuse me, excuse me. We're, this is up for a public hearing tonight. So at this time, I'll open up the public hearing at eight-twelve. Do we have any cards?
I do not.
Would anybody like to speak to resolution seventeen-one-sixteen? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at eight-thirteen. And since this is up for adoption consideration- And since this is up for adoption consideration, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved to approve again.
Joe Edwards made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Steve Hoover. This is a resolution. All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. And so, we move on to resolution seventeen one eighteen, Common Council of City of Westfield, presented by Kevin. Good evening, Kevin.
Good evening, President, members of the council. For the record, Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. Tonight for your consideration by resolution is the annual tax abatement compliance review as required by Indiana Code. The council's approval tonight would confirm compliance with the various statement of benefits from our abatement approvals over the past few years. The city currently has twenty approved abatements. Sixteen of them are active. The abatement period for the remaining four, which on the screen is, are the line items without any numbers included. It's those four items. Those have not yet begun because the full assessment of their improvements has not yet been performed. Tonight's resolution includes all sixteen of our active abatements. Of the sixteen abatements included in this resolution, fourteen of them have reached their projections for employee numbers, salaries, and improvements and investment and are, and/or are on a reasonable trend towards reaching, reaching their projections by the end of their abatement period. The remaining two, custom concrete and custom cast stone, are in the final year of their abatement period. This resolution is before you for adoption consideration this evening. The council's action is time-sensitive because the individual entities are required to file their deductions with the county by May fifteenth and it's helpful for the city's actions on compliance to be completed before that deadline. With that, I believe there are several of our abatement recipients here this evening to answer any questions that you may have of them. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have of staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. There was a email, I don't know if you all saw it, regarding lack of information on IMMI that was updated. So, they are in full compliance with their, is that correct, Kevin? They're in full compliance with the number of employees?
That's correct.
On track?
That's correct.
And?
So, Kevin, what you're saying is that custom concrete and custom stone are not in compliance, is this correct?
Well, they were, they were a little bit low on some of their numbers, but as we've explained over the years on those and others that were approved right around the recession, council has, has shown favor to those over the years. They've been making some progress, but, but not quite reaching the numbers that they projected pre, pre-recession.
And I think that's just jobs, right? I mean, they're paying, they're, they're current with their taxes and they're actually paying their property taxes. It's just their job numbers are low.
They're fully up to date on their tax payments. It's just job numbers are a little bit low.
Okay. I entertain a motion.
Move to approve resolution seventeen dash one eighteen.
A motion by Bob Horkey to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chuck Lehman, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor approving resolution seventeen one eighteen signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We have resolution seventeen one twenty, additional appropriations for two thousand and seventeen parks, presented by Melody Jones.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I am Melody Jones from the Parks and Recreation Department. In order to help promote the Mayor's Green Initiative, Parks Department would like to take our first step in replacing all of the existing trash receptacles that we have in the parks, on the trails, and in the downtown area with a new combination trash recycling bins. The funds that we would use for this, we already collect. It comes from our shelter rental fees. It's in a non-reverting fund, but we didn't ask for appropriation to cover the cost to do something like that. So, I'm here before you tonight to ask for additional appropriation from that fund so that we can purchase these and switch out all of the receptacles that exist, including just a couple of additional ones. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? I have one. How will these be serviced?
It's part of, part of the Brightview contract.
Okay, okay. And they're serviced on a regular basis?
Yes, just like the trash is currently handled then now.
So, there's no change in that?
No change whatsoever. And, I might add, they are adding this to their workload at no additional cost to our contract.
Oh, you're full of good news today.
I know, aren't they great?
All right. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
More keen and a second by Joe Ed, Edwards. Okay. And this is up for adoption consideration. So, I call the question. All those in favor approving resolution seventeen one twenty signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Resolution seventeen one twenty-one, two thousand and seventeen transfer Grand Park properties. Mr. Zager.
Yes, sir. As you know, the city acquired several parcels that make up the Grand Park and this was acquired over a period of years, a lot of them on options and the opportunity to buy them at a later price depending on the time that the value of the acreage went up. At the time it was purchased, it was purchased by the Redevelopment Authority, which floated bonds, sold bonds. The service upon the debt is done by the Redevelopment Commission, which is run in the Grand Park area. For those of you that are more familiar with building corporations, think of the Redevelopment Authority as the building corporation. One of the things that are pledged to pay back the bonds is, of course, the land. So, the land should be transferred over to the Redevelopment Authority so that follows form.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Zager? I entertain a motion.
Move to approve resolution seventeen dash one twenty-one.
I have a second?
Second.
Chuck Lehman, seconds. Any further discussion?
Basically, this is just making sure that the security or the, well, not the security, I'm searching for the word, collateral for the bonds, resist with, or resist, sits with the outfit that issued the bonds, basically.
Yes, sir. I think it's pretty well established that it already is because the process we talked about prior in which the authority to go into debt rests here. You have to approve it. You also approve the manner in which it was being done. So, this is just following through on that.
Any other questions?
One, does this include the, the land underneath the event center as well as the rest of Grand Park?
It does not.
It does not. So, that is still a separate?
That's still in the city's name.
It, it just gets a little confusing.
It, it gets worse, but yeah.
I know. Just wanted that clarified.
Anyone else? All those in favor passing resolution seventeen one twenty-one signify, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. And now we're down to resolution seventeen one twenty-two, sale of property. Mr. Zager.
Sir, this has to do with the home that's just west of Target. Think back a little bit. That home was, was a subject of a condemnation proceeding, or at least the beginning of a condemnation proceeding for the improvements that lie just between that home and Target. Some of the infrastructure that went in there and the acquisition of the city by some of the property was necessary to, to acquire, to, to allow those kind of improvements. At the time, it was estimated that the acquisition of that property would be on the low end of about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. There was a time crunch in being able to fulfill the, the requirements of acquiring the land and thus get the financing available. And a sale was entered into by the, by the city and the homeowner for approximately six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The appraisal is now set at, at somewhere north of five hundred thousand, five hundred and ten, where need this resolution so that it can be auctioned off for no less than the appraised value. So, the benefit is not only some ten, twenty thousand dollars, but also the ability to finish the project and get the financing that was available with the funds that were threatened by the timing.
Thank you. Any questions? I entertain a motion to approve seventeen one twenty-two.
Move to approve seventeen one twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bob Horkey made the motion. Sidney Spolterick, Spolterick, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor passing resolution seventeen one twenty-two and the motion before signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. At this time, any guests who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda may do so at the present time. Do we have any cards?
Mine is, I'm sorry, Chris Blido, one six four three, Lakeville Crossing in Countryside. I sit on the board for Countryside, but I'm actually coming for you as a resident since the board hasn't meant to discuss this, but it's somewhat of a timing matter. The, the city has been working to improve the, the corners of the paths in the community, which we greatly appreciate and for the most part are going fairly smoothly, but came to my attention today that one of those corners actually became an impediment because of the design and, and considering they're supposed to be ADA compliant, but now it looks as if they won't even be compliant with regular pedestrian traffic, let alone ADA. I'd like that the city just be expeditious in reviewing the corner. It's at the southwest corner of Countryside Boulevard and one hundred and sixty-ninth Street. There's a forced curve in the path that prohibits people from taking a right-hand turn across the intersection. They actually have to go up the path, do a U-turn, and come back, which could cause collisions, any number of things. But to look at it, it, it becomes fairly clear and I don't, I don't know why, probably out of context as it was being designed, it wasn't, it wasn't viewed that way, but before much is done, there's a lot of other intersections being done. I just would like to. It's south, southeast corner of Countryside Boulevard, yeah, near our clubhouse, but on the southeast side. The others, at first glance seemed to be fine to me, but knowing that there's others to be done, I'd just like to have those looked at before something else. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, Chris, I think he's got your, got a card filled out for you.
I know you miss me. I have a mineral winter. But anyway, my name is Sharon J. Williams and I was born here in Washington Township in nineteen thirty-nine. I live at eight oh seven East State Road thirty-two, not eight oh seven West State Road thirty-two, like you changed it. And then FEMA had to change it back. My neighbor, my neighbor was infuriated with me because he had come over to my house repeatedly, three different times, to try to get me to sell my home to him. And since I don't think I'm gonna make a profit, I'm not selling it to him. I refused to sell it to him. Plus, he threatened me. I was sitting right there and he said, well, something might happen to you. That's one of the things I thought the city of Westfield ought to know. The second thing was, I have had a predator that stalked me at McDonald's on December the twelfth, two thousand and sixteen this year, and he invited, invited himself to come to my house. And I said, no, I wasn't in the business. And so, I was totally shocked at that. I'd never had anything like that happen to me in my entire life. So, I thought the city of Westfield ought to know. And that's the reason I'm commenting. The second, the, but before that, on June the twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen, I was stalked at the Marsh Grocery Store. Some idiot female doesn't know what the stop sign means and she did not stop. So, I, since my windows were, her windows were down, I said, you idiot. And she heard me and it offended her. So, she didn't have time to stop at the stop sign, but she did have time to pull and park her car and then she stalked me into the Marsh Grocery Store. She stood there and chewed me out and told me that she had never been called an idiot in her life. Well, that's fine with me, but if you don't know the, the driving rules, you ought to not be on the driveway. She was driving a silver van and she had gray hair. And she not only stood there and, she not only stalked me, she chewed me out for twenty minutes because I called her an idiot. Okay? The third stalking that I had was, I've been threatened by my neighbor, although I'm not giving the neighbor, the names out. The other reason I didn't call is I don't want to get involved in anything like that because it's always a he said, she said. You never win in those things. On the third of October, I was coming out of Speedway and I was going to make a right-hand turn into my, well, I had to make a left-hand turn first, but I was gonna make a right-hand turn in my driveway, which was four houses away. Okay? So, somebody had pre-arranged one of those hits, you know, the pedestrian hits, but the thing of it is, it didn't work because I was quicker than he was and my brakes worked just fine. So, I missed him by two feet. So, when I came to the stop at State Road thirty-two and Oak Ridge Road, I sat there for whatever amount of time. He finally got up off of the roadway and walked to the, a walk right there at Oak Ridge and State Road thirty-two. But, I thought, well, that'll be the end of it. No, it wasn't the end of it. He decided he was gonna stalk me. So, he stalked me to my house and when I turned in my driveway and he knew where I lived, he pulled into my driveway and then he chewed me out for being an old lady. The funny part of it was, was he had as much gray hair as I did. I told him.
Ms. Williams?
Yes?
You need to be safe in the streets. You need to call the police when you have somebody that you feel threatened.
I've, I've been threatened in my own home by the person trying to buy my property. You, you don't have to go anyplace really. You can just be courteous and friendly and you can be threatened.
We wish everybody was courteous, but you need to be safe. And the way to be safe is to call the police when you have.
I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. I'm not gonna do it. I fear if they murder me, they murder me. It's just be a crime in Westfield.
Well, thank you very much.
The other thing I would like to say is.
Ms. Williams, your time is about up.
I am not in the building business. I do not sell lumber. I do not sell appliances. I do not sell anything that goes into a home, water heaters, plumbing, anything. Okay? So, I'm not making any money when everybody else is making all these profits. So, I, no money is going into my bank account. So, I don't have the same interest that the city of Westfield does in building homes. I don't know who's making the kickback, but let me clue you, I'm sure not. That's it.
Mrs. Williams, your time has expired. Thank you.
I was gonna quit anyway. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Hearing none, city council. APC.
Update, last week APC met, the field brewing in the junction, PUDs, and the unified development ordinance both received favorable recommendations to the council, which we've acted on this evening. We also held a public hearing on the Harworth Business Park PUD and the Dartown Crossing Plan Unit Development PUD. That was it. That was it.
Any other, Joe?
Open Gov has had one meeting with some representatives from that software company, and we plan to introduce that to the council members very soon. We're gonna have to, it'll take us some time to get up to speed on it, but, I think it's getting to the place where we can introduce it to the council members, and we can begin to see what's good and what's bad about it, and it's gonna take some practice to drill down to the things that we need to drill down to, but I think it'll be a benefit to us, and we'll have a, at least a quarterly or monthly report of budgeted actual items and spending and this sort of thing that mostly has gotten from clerk's office, and just put into a form that we can see, and hopefully next year, we'll be able to put it out for public perusal so that the public can look at parts of it also. So I think we've made, and that's nothing, none, none to my credit, that's Tammy and John have worked on this and worked pretty hard, and I think they want to make it successful, and I, I want to work with them to make it successful.
All right, thank you, Joe. Any other comments? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Ake, several things. Our Public Works Director, Jeremy Lawler, has been out with a, with a medical issue all last week. When he returns, we'll be honoring him. He has received the Indiana Chapter of the Public Works Leader of the Year Award from the American Public Works Association, so we're very, very proud of Jeremy. He also chose to miss a small amount of rainfall we had last week, I think there was something behind it. The Assistant Director, Mrs. Smitherman, was indoctrinated in how we handle public works emergencies. Had a fun couple days, did you not, Mrs. Smitherman? Yes. The, the men and women of the Public Works reacted, they actually treated the whole event as a snow event, meaning they constantly monitored all night long, communicate with the cops and so on. Some good things actually came out of it in that, the, what'd we have, seven, some inches of rain, I think. You know, we're very excited to get the new regional detention going for the downtown area, you know, this with the new Mill Street Bridge. We have that weir or dam just south of the bridge that backs up all that water for the first time, before it was a failed railroad right-of-way. I would say, talking to Phil, our engineer, that had we not had this new structure in place, we probably would have flooded the downtown last, last week, so we were very glad to see that happen. The stream was raging, we had kayakers and surfers in downtown Westfield, so we were, looks like the, that project is, is, is going to work well on, on our stormwater, and those guys, they, they did a great job getting those high-water signs up, I know the cops and the fire guys, I don't believe we had any major issues, and of course, being on a high areas we are, everything receded quite quickly, so we're ready for the next one coming tonight. We also had last weekend, the daddy-daughter dance put on by our Parks Department, it was sold out, Melody and her ladies did a, and Peter, gentleman, did a great job with that, I got to attend with my three granddaughters, and they just thought that was just fantastic, so it was, it was a lot of fun, look forward to doing that again next year. This Saturday, bulk trash day, Saturday from eight to noon, you need proof of residency, and you can check on the website to see what can and cannot be brought in, but when Melody was up, she mentioned this is really kicking off kind of our green initiative, and we'll be making a, a more formal announcement on this, first of June. But we intend to, to really kick off kind of a extended, year-long green initiative for the City of Westfield, it'll work on a lot of different projects, from conservation of electricity, gas, water, therefore wastewater, we're going to encourage home planting of native grasses, we're gonna look at the extensiveness of our litter program and talk some about that, looking at US thirty-one on how that is all native grasses, and is the first project in Indiana maintained really by, by the city in a, in a, in a grassland kind of environment there, so we're gonna take a look at a lot of these things, that's why recycling, kicking that off with raised trash, we're looking forward to, to announcing that. And lastly, we'll have at Quaker Park on twenty-fourth, we have all-new playground equipment there, we'll have kind of a kickoff with refreshments, a magician airbrush tattoo, that'll be from four thirty to six thirty, and Joe Edwards, if you wish, we can get a waving bear.
I've seen this before.
I, I also, I see our chief Reed in the background, I had the opportunity to go down to FDIC, the firefighters convention, and I understand a group of our firefighters who participate in extreme competition down there, it's really grueling, they came in first place, and so, my congratulations to Matt Hanson and his group. So I, I hope we can have them over next meeting or something to congratulate them, but they work hard at that, they train hard, and we have a new firefighter, and her name is Chief?
Abby Yates.
Abby Yates. She's a very petite young lady, and she blew them away. It was just amazing because the guy carry a hundred and eighty-five pound dummy back about a hundred yards, and I don't know if many of us in this room could do that, in addition to climbing a fire tower with full gear and turnout gear and a hose up to the top and other things, it's just really fun to watch and amazing, so hats off to them, Chief, thank you. That's all I have. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. I heard a couple there, all right, we stand adjourned, thank you.
She said that was the first one, so I don't know, we don't, 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 I don't know, we don't...